I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Yes, the meeting's called the order. It's a... About... Um... Minutes?
Minutes. Yeah, I just entered one thing that I... Which you saw, just... I was just entering that outside the new draft extension of recreational by law hadn't been approved by planning board when I was presented. That's some input, but it was the first time for law people that that's a question. The titles are mine.
Anyone else? Peter, you have a problem with it? I move to approve the minutes.
Second.
On a favor?
Aye.
Uh, we just paid bills. Uh, 221 to 35 grade of construction update?
Yep, that was the information that I gave you. Roland found that there was about 250 square feet in the second floor that wasn't shown on the approved plans, on the plans that you approved. Question is what to do with that area?
Where is the, uh, the square footage from the original thing that we approved? I thought the back of it had 6,500 square feet. Is that right? And the front had 5,600 square feet? Is that sound?
That's about right.
Okay. Now, the back of the building is 80 feet long by 70 wide. Is that right?
230.
Oh, it says.
83 by 77, not 82 by 72 as approved.
Okay.
Basically the same.
All right, so what's, uh, what's 83 times 70?
77 square feet.
83 times...
The only difference is a foot, 77 square feet.
I don't care about that. That's not what I... I want to know, that's the back of the building, right? That's not the whole building.
Right. It was supposed to be 82 by 77, it's 83 by 77.
Okay. What's 83 times 77?
I don't know.
Do you have your calculator on that?
No.
Those little buttons over there?
He wants to know what 83 times 77 is. It's a lot.
Is it 6,500?
You could ask the building inspector, the zoning forester.
Roland.
And just to clarify what's happening here, you approved a building with certain exterior dimensions of 82 by 77, but it's actually, if you do the math, it's 83 by 77. So they built it correctly by what you approved, but your conceptual drawing that you had before you, the number was incorrect. And that's the overall building.
6390. 6391.
6391.
Seventy-three.
Uh, that is the backside or that's the entire?
Entire building.
Okay. Okay, so that's the reason, what I'm curious about is that the square footage they put down originally for the remont, for the detailing portion of it was X amount. And then the front of it was X amount.
Right.
One, I thought the number was, to be honest with you, I thought it was 6,500 square feet in the back and 56 in the front is what I thought it was. So it's no, that's not even, what is, the reason why I want, it looks as if the front of the building has shrunk. The retail portion of it is less than what was proposed originally.
I don't have a plan before me, but as I reviewed it, I don't recall seeing any conventional changes to the building.
Okay.
I think the dividing petition between retail and the detailing is probably where we had approved it.
Okay.
It didn't, it didn't strike me as being odd. I have to assume that that's the case.
To bottom line, you don't have a problem with it.
Now, I think the issue here, the second floor of the retail, the way they framed the gables, their fake gables, instead of having true valley gables. And so you have additional square foot area now on that second level that you didn't have before. And my point here in my letter is if there is a problem, it will simply box those out and have access being directly into there.
So they're actually having a little bit more retail and less?
Yeah, by about 250 square feet. But even some of that is a headroom problem also, isn't it?
It's, it's...
So storage.
But it's reality, it's less. It has less square footage.
I have one.
If you take this, if you take the headroom, which they don't have, you need, I mean, you can't count the two feet worth of, you know, that's, you can't use that two feet.
Right.
And is that a 12 pitch or is that, that's kind of steep, isn't it?
Yep.
So you've got to be in seven feet from the, from the, from the shoe line in order before you get seven feet worth of headroom, correct?
What Peter's saying is it's a fake gable again, but if it was a true real gable, you'd be able to walk right into that gable with no headroom issues. But now because it's a fake gable, you've got that roof slope.
You've lost seven feet of floor is what you've lost. You've lost seven feet of floor space.
Sure.
So which means the square footage of the second floor is much less than what they proposed.
Much less, but that's your discretion.
But it, okay, but Peter, I mean, what was that space going to be used for anyway? It was either storage or...
Storage.
Storage or...
It was, we gave an offset. We gave them...
Oh, I get that part.
We gave them a detail in order to get retail.
So you wanted to clear that space unusable?
Well, I think the second floor is unusable. How does, how does the population get up there? The regular pop, you know, the shoppers don't go up there.
The intent at the moment right now, according to the, uh, the builder, is that the second level is going to be private office space.
So it's not retail?
It's not retail.
But it's tied to the office space down below, right?
It can never be separate apart.
Right.
I guess it could, but...
But it's kind of, it has to be rented with the space that's down below.
I don't understand. What's the caterers?
What's my issue?
Yeah.
Is that we approved what looked to be a 60 percent detailing and 40 percent retail or 50-50, and the numbers don't equate to that.
Is it materially different?
I think it's a big number difference.
Over, over, what are we arguing about?
Arguing over what I think is over 1,000 square feet.
1,000 square feet?
I think it is. The difference from what we, do we have any of those prints from the first approvals that we have?
I have them in my office.
How do I come up with it? From what they wrote down for numbers for what they had for detailed space to residential? I'll look at it again. I have a plan on it.
But is it really an issue?
Is it?
The, but I think we need to decide whether it's really an issue amongst...
I'll look at it and then, you know, if the, if the footage is off as much as I think it is, I feel that, again, we gave them that, that detailing shock. In that area, there's a trade-off to getting, to getting commercial.
Retail in the front.
To get retail in the front.
What was that filed, like 60-40?
We don't know exactly. Square footage is what it's on. Just take a look at it.
I'll look at it.
Do we have to, do we have to, is that a ruling here?
We don't have to do anything specific right now. It's just, um, it's just... There's an agency, huh? At least forgotten to put the clapper.
Okay, Peter, why don't you let us know on the next meeting and go take a look so you can take it for the...
Thank you.
All right, we have 7:40, complete street policy from APC.
Thank you.
Some handouts. Is sign up, uh, sign up sheet in the front here for everybody coming in if you want to sign in here or handouts if anyone wants to grab handouts. I can't hear. I meant to say that 10 minutes ago. So give us stuff upside if you want to follow. Please sign in.
Close the minute?
Yes.
Can we have to sign in to do that?
Yes, yes.
Oh.
Want to want us to know you're here? All right. More?
Nope.
She has a computer.
The details, the emphasis change, the kids in the fallout, but no...
Common warning, Johnny Cash died 10 years ago.
You don't have your white suit on? Two suits.
All right. Do you want to give us a...
Go ahead. There's some additional handouts out here if anybody wants any.
Would you like to introduce the MAPC folks here? Just because the, um, MAPC was kind enough to approach the town of Littleton to see if we wanted to take advantage of the opportunity to have MAPC staff work with the local community to develop a so-called complete streets policy, which you'll hear about tonight. Sounded interesting enough that, in line with some other initiatives that we're doing, including some of the things that the newly formed bicycle advisory committees looking at, some of the members of that committee are here tonight. But what we didn't want to do is to say to MAPC, yes, we'll accept your staff assistance to work with us on something unless we could give them the signal that what it was about is something that we were interested in and might actually adopt at the end. So the way to do that is to come here, planning board is central to what we would or wouldn't do if we adopted one, and so we're here to just brief you on what it's about.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for that introduction. So this is a project that's coming through what's called a community transformation grant. It's a multi-year, multimillion dollar grant that MPC, which, we're the regional planning agency for the 101 cities and towns within the Boston region, for anybody that isn't familiar with us. And so the purpose of this grant is to get at the root of chronic diseases, heart disease, diabetes, obesity, et cetera. Several avenues to do that. One is through tobacco cessation programs. One is through increasing access to food, healthy foods, I should say. And the other one is through increasing physical activity. And that's what this specific initiative is kind of coming up through, the physical activity aspect. The idea being that increasing sort of your everyday physical activity as opposed to trying to get everybody to go to a gym is really the best way for, to make sort of a population change and improve people's health. Just to give a little bit of, I guess, context, the 20 minutes a day, which includes walking, is the recommended physical activity levels, which most people don't get. So we think if you have streets that, where you're able to walk and bike, et cetera, that are more comfortable and safe, then you could actually increase the physical activity in your community. So...
So it's a health grant, a planning grant, but still, as am I.
I keep a foot in both doors, of the planners and the public health folks. So what is a complete street? For those who aren't familiar with the term, it's a street that's essentially designed and created, they're streets that are safe, accessible, comfortable, and convenient for users of all different types of ages, abilities, and for different modes of transportation. So that means that it's a street that, where a child is safe walking on, an elderly person, disabled person, people that are walking, for biking, if you have commuter rail, increasing access to the commuter rail, enabling that type of, of transportation as well. One thing that I think is important to emphasize is what a complete street is, and it's meant to be context sensitive. And by that, what I mean is what is appropriate in, let's say, Boston or Chelsea as a complete street, isn't the same as what a complete street would be in Hudson, Stowe, Littleton. It's also context sensitive in the sense that what might be appropriate in your central retail district isn't the same as on a, you know, residential area, for example. And so that's, that's one of the misconceptions, I think, is that it's sort of a design prescription, which it's not, and that it's applicable for cities, which it's not. So the benefits, as I kind of alluded to, this is coming out of the sort of the public health realm, so increasing physical activity is a major component, improving road safety is a major component, but there's other sort of benefits as well, one of which is in retail districts, a lot of studies show that increasing the walking and biking in this area, in those areas improves the economic development. It can allow people to reduce their personal transportation costs if it's easier for them to walk or bike rather than having to spend their money on gas for something that otherwise would be a close trip. You can improve your air quality. And then finally, there is, which one of the handouts I gave you is this active streets legislation, which is still kind of working its way through beyond the state legislature. But that, if it's passed, what it will do is essentially give a pot of money each year to communities to implement various types of complete streets initiatives and roadway improvements. And one of these sort of, I guess, is several aspects that you need in order to apply for this money, and one of them is to have a policy. So this is sort of a good step, and frankly, communities that get in on it earlier will have less competition because it's not many communities right now in our region, actually nobody right now has a policy that's settled, or working with several communities to do that. There's a number of elements, and I won't go through all of these, but it's everything from thinking about sidewalks when possible to, for thinking about, like, for elderly people that maybe can't walk as quickly, so having the signals retimed in a way that's appropriate so that to allow them to cross the street. For bicyclists, it could mean bike lanes, it could just mean a widened shoulder on rural roads. It could include things like street safety improvements, such as nice lighting, things like that. It's a whole variety of things, and I'm happy to answer questions related to that.
How would, how would this, we're in the middle right now, we're, we're building a large commercial complex that we're hoping is going to be sensitive to bikes and pedestrian to get there. We're in the middle of trying to come up with a solution to, to make Russell Street more friendly to get to that area. How would this fit in with that corridor and the 119 corridor? Would you be available to give us design, help with the design criteria, with the bike trails, bike paths?
Yeah, and MPC, we've done, we're working with several communities on bicycle and pedestrian networks.
Those, those are excellent, uh, real world examples that I think they could work with us on and helping to craft policies. Or you're talking about, those are things that we actually need to do anyway, and can we have their staff help us look at them with, with an eye to not only giving us their advice, but also what kind of policy could, uh...
And layout too, for that matter.
Yeah, so I...
If you need to take a bike and pedestrian.
And, and we have been working with several communities, so I think it's important just to make the distinction between sort of the policy that sort of essentially says, like, this is our culture. We are sort of, when we design a road, when we reconstruct a road, when we pave a road, we're going to sort of think about these things. And then the sort of implementation of specific examples and, and as I was mentioning, yes, MAPC does help with that, the latter as well. I, I think sort of the only, I mean, you could sort of segue into my final point of thinking about, that what is a policy? And a policy is something that's meant to be flexible and it is meant to sort of allow for exceptions. You might have a road, if it's maybe a trucking route with nobody that would ever walk, you don't necessarily need to have a sidewalk there. But the point, I think, is that you considered it and you thought about why you wouldn't need it, or if there's some project that, I mean, just the cost of including a bicycle lane is just prohibitive, you wouldn't have to have one.
And we've had, in the past, we had a sidewalk fund that all started and unfortunately used up all the money, and maybe this is a good segue into starting to do that again with some of the developments that are coming before the town at this time. Does the board have another question or any comments on that?
So how much money's on the table for implementation?
Maybe you can say for that.
Um, so this specific initiative is, our funds are working towards the implementation of the policy, not the implementation of the actual specific sites. For specific sites, that would be a separate thing, and we may as...
No, I understand. I'm just saying, how much, if we were to have this policy, we're going through this, you know, we, I'm assuming we go through some process where we tell the state we're putting pedestrians friendly street in, and we want an extra $2 million to...
So, so you're referring to the active streets legislation?
Well, I mean, it's going to cost money to do what you're talking about.
Sure. So, the...
Who gets this money, the first round, to do the policy?
Yeah, just a couple of things. For the, for starters, there, there's no money changing hands right now.
No, I understand that.
It's like, I mean, us, that, that it's, that the, the grant that, that MAPC has received is paying for their staff time, and that now they're deciding which communities to have that funded staff work with. So that's, that's step one. Step, step two is then, what is our, you know, that, that our policy guidelines, even absent any other funding sources, would direct what new development certainly should look like. It would, it would, and it would also...
Regardless of case for it.
Yeah, regardless of whether there's, you know, whether it's paid for by a developer or whomever. And a third is that there is legislation that MAPC has drafted, I think, is pending in the legislature, to create a, a special fund to make additional monies available for those communities that have adopted complete streets policy. So that's a moving target. There's no money, it hasn't passed the legislature yet, but it's, it's, it's something that's under consideration. So it's a potential new source, but it's not guaranteed.
It gets us at the readiness level to actually apply for grant.
So we have to vote whether we want to support the streets, is that what?
Uh, whether you, I guess, would support possibly.
Yeah, that's what I'm looking for. I don't want to, I don't want to have us say to MAPC, come on down and work with us if we aren't, if we don't think that it's something we want.
I think it's fair.
It's supposed to be like it's something we want, but we wanted your official stamp.
We have the chair of board health there, we have...
Do you have any, before, do you have any, what do you think, Peter?
Do you really want to know?
No.
No, I don't.
Yeah, we'll take the majority.
Does anyone in the audience have any questions or concerns about this?
Anyone has any objections? I mean, it sounds good. It sounds very possible.
It's a great idea. Obviously, we can use all the help we get. All right, okay.
There was a suggested vote.
I'll entertain emotions. Select one that we would totally endorse, signing up with MAPC.
I second the motion.
So, on a favor?
Aye.
Do you see it?
He doesn't like kids, he doesn't like bicycling. He only likes country and snow.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you for your time.
Thanks for coming.
I'm almost right on time. I say, you know, yeah.
Yes, you're early.
What?
It's like you're early.
We're efficient tonight, so we'll get by, trust me.
So what, where is that, where is that lot?
I'm sure, I'm sure.
It's a boss's studio.
Yeah, why don't you have the side? Well, I don't want the people on TV to...
Part of your other copies, you guys can look at.
I know. One pass on the paper. Turn that thing around.
Don't give it a paper.
Yeah, you can turn that on.
Yep.
It's pretty, it's pretty expensive.
Um, so basically, we're, we're on the existing site, which is 20 Poshua Street, and we'll be utilizing the existing fire station and the garage itself off to the left. And then our proposal is to add additional office space as well as garage space out into the existing parking lot on the side of the building as well as out in the rear of the building. Something that will allow us to accomplish this would be to remove the old police station as, as well as the rear garage that currently houses three pieces of apparatus, which are currently out in the back. This, this option also gives us a large training room out in the front of the building. Currently, we have space up on the second floor. This would allow us a bit more space so that we could actually fit our entire membership with a few, a few other people that would like to participate in some of the regional trainings that we do hold. And then the garage space, this would be 80 feet wide by 100 feet deep. That's four bays that would basically hold all of our existing equipment. And the one thing that, that it allows us, it would give us the space that we're supposed to have. Currently, we have about three feet in between our apparatus and, and where the membership gets dressed to go out on a call. And as apparatus are pulling out, it's a very close one, you know, the mirrors are going by, guys getting dressed, as, as well as, you know, the trucks in between. But this would allow the, what's required today is 12 feet of space in between from truck to truck and trucks to walls. And it would also allow us to have a, an appropriate place to have our gear storage. So basically, I'll go over this real quick. The, the blueprint portion, the, for the floor. On the first floor, we'd keep a portion of the existing garage and, just in the front for utility vehicles, and then the rest of it would turn into office space. The center of the front portion is the existing building, that would get renovated. And then the front right corner is that, the training room. That would be our, the main training facility. Then there's a long strip that is in the rear of the existing building. This would be able to house additional offices as well as our gear storage area where we all get dressed, to go out on calls. And a watchroom for our fire alarm equipment. all get dressed, to go out on calls, and a watchroom for our fire alarm equipment and radios and whatnot. And then the bays, which are 20 feet, 20-foot bays, four 20-foot bays by 100 feet deep. And then on the far, in the rear, there's actually a carport in the center where we'd be able to house all of our trailers that we currently have out back, keep them out of the weather. In the front right corner would be a training tower, two-story, 25 by 25 training tower, basically a firescape type on the inside as well as the outside, metal doors, windows, something that would take a little bit of use and allow us to actually train on site. And then a few stories rooms on the far rear as well. The second floor, which is the existing building, and then a portion behind that in the addition, this would all be the living space. That's just for the membership, it wouldn't be open to the public, so it wouldn't require the elevator for that portion of the facility. As we look at the whole site, in the overview, you can see the new proposed area, it actually would be taking over a portion of the front lot, the front parking lot on the right side, where there's currently 20 spaces, and we'd be reconfiguring the far side, and by reconfiguring the parking in the rear, we gain an additional 20 spots. So we actually go to about, I think it's 42 spots for parking in the rear. Puts it all together in one safe location, so you'd have simple access out into Fay Park or out for the conservation land. And then, what we're actually discussing now, we'd probably paint like a crosswalk across the front apron and then do a sidewalk on the green space in the front, so that they still have clear access to the church and out to the street. That portion of Wilderness Road, which is currently parking lot, that would also be improved a little bit to accommodate apparatus coming in and out as well as regular traffic. It would be, basically be the same size as a regular road that's in town right now. So there wouldn't be any issues with passing traffic. And that's just one more rendition. Any questions?
12 feet in between?
That's the NFPA requirement right now.
Who?
National Fire Protection Agency, that's who, that's the standard under building a fire station. So that would be basically the code for the garage space. It would be an increase of 1,640 square feet from what we currently have, to bring that up to code, to the proper spacing for apparatus.
What's the estimated budget to build this?
6.6.
Thousand?
Thousand. Million, yes, wishful. 578,000 for design, and the remainder is for construction.
Yeah, I'll bring up my question. I live on Foster Street in some distance away, I'm not a butter, and, yeah, as we discussed, yeah, we're all very supportive of the fire department and what you do and your skill set. But I guess that was at two meetings, one which I learned about word of mouth, because people in 300 feet were invited to it, and also the second one, and the neighbors were blindsided on the decision process of this, where you're multiplying the brick building fivefold and taking over the gravel, dirt, unproved road, wilderness road right to Fay Park. And they were sort of surprised, and at the second meeting, the following meeting walk about, there was a selectman, I said, well, why weren't, and this may not be your skill set, it may be more of the town administration's skill set, why weren't the people informed? Where was the decision made? And one selectman blamed the budding neighbors for not knowing about it, which I don't think is the right answer. And I said, well, where's the integrated planning for this? And then that same selectman blamed the planning board for this. So I am sort of curious, you know, we just had someone present about making workable streets and stuff very open, very transparent. Where did the decision happen? Because all the budding neighbors were totally surprised and amazed that they weren't involved at all with this.
This is the part of, the final part of the feasibility study, which is the very beginning of this process. And that is how this, we began this in February, several selectmen's meetings. There were invitations sent to all of the abutters when we had our first open house.
Right.
Our second open house was published in the newspaper on a cable channel.
Oh, we're talking about August, peak vacation season, a couple of weeks ago, right?
Yep. And so it was put out, and again, this, no, there aren't any decisions that have been made yet. This is the beginning of our process.
Right.
So we're not trying to hide anything. We're still gaining public support for this. We have another open house in October during our annual fire department open house. So there's nothing being hidden or railroaded or anything like that. This is the beginning of our process that actually began in February, and we're bringing, this is actually our third design, and we've taken, we've taken comments from the neighborhood. I thought it was very important to have, you know, the neighbors' input on that, and that is how we had adjusted the building. It was longer and narrow before. We've compacted it a bit, reduced it by one bay's worth, and made them a little bit deeper, utilized the lot a little bit more effectively, increased the parking so that it was a bit more efficient for the parks and conservation land. And so I think overall, we're working at improving this, and that is why I'm making my rounds to all of the boards now.
Sure.
So this, like I said, this is still just the beginning of our process.
Right, and I gather after that second meeting, you've given go-ahead to go to all the boards and so on. And, yeah, I'm just parroting what I've heard from the neighbors who are closer there, just surprised with the scale of it, and I know there's certain things driving this about, I feel you have to be collected in one site versus having a satellite site, which had been suggested before, such as having emergency vehicles at the police station and so on. So just so I understand this better, yeah, and as a public forum, and, you know, this isn't necessarily your skill set, it is, should be the town administration's skill set to involve the public. Is part of this on the siting process, because it seemed like it was very inflexible? I mean, that was a feeling neighbors had when they walked away, they just shook their heads, that, oh, this is inflexible. You have improved the design, more parking spaces, although I must say with the church there, they now have to go in the woods to go parking, but...
They have to go 140 feet further than they currently do.
Than the fireside. So, I mean, there are some issues. So, just help me a bit on the process, with this money for the design, is it going to be site selection as part of this? Because there was a feeling that everything had been pretty much set in concrete, even though we said it was not.
Some of the initial direction that I got from the board was that we're currently on-site, we're utilizing the building, it's a sound facility, so why not expand on it? And that's our direction that we're going, to currently stay on-site.
You have the board's staff person here.
And to go a little deeper into that, as far as the department goes, that is, you know, and it's a, how it affects the town, that is the geographical center of town. And as a call department, you know, there's 30-some-odd members that respond from home to a call, from all different points in town. And that is, it's out of the center of town, it's not at the police station where there's going to be four more sets of lights. So as call members respond to the existing fire station, they can get there pretty efficiently and effectively without having to go through red lights and fight traffic in common. So that's part of our proposal, is to continue staying on that site for that ability to have a, you know, a safe response time, and not increase it by moving around to somewhere else in town.
You know, I had a question about the need for the fire. There's no question about it, I mean, no one questions that. I am sort of curious about the process.
There's been, there's been no process of selecting any other site, other than the existing fire station?
Although there were ideas floated before, and actually even people at police department were sort of surprised because they thought some of you guys were going to go over there.
Well...
When is your next meeting that you're going to be doing? This is really not an area for us.
Right, right. But this is just...
It's really something that if you're coming out...
There's no policy decisions that go running.
This is just an FYI, this is the first thing we're going to look at.
We've asked the chief to, I mean, the chief has had his meetings first with the neighbors, which was the first group he went with.
Yeah, I was...
Well, he had to be, he's doing the outreach, he'll have, he had many more meetings. But what I've also asked him to do is to make sure he's making rounds with all of the regulatory boards, so that any concerns that they may have are taken into consideration. But the last time that we looked at potential site for this, for the fire station, was back in 2007, when we, when it was identified that moving to the same location as the new police station was not in the best interest of the volunteer fire department because of the issues, as the chief has said, with, you know, getting the call firefighters on this side of 495, keeping them on this side in order to get any equipment and get to the fire. That, so there hasn't been any site selection process, there's no specifically owned land that has been identified as a potential site for a new fire station, there's no discussion of building more than one fire station, that there's, that we can't, you know, we can't afford, you know, we can probably afford one, but we definitely cannot afford more than one, having one one fire station in town. And so it needs to be located at whatever's in the best interest of the fire function, which the chief and now successive chiefs of both of us is at the existing location. And so the task, and so the task is to make the existing site as functional as possible. And they certainly want to take into consideration all the concerns that the neighbors have and concerns that the townspeople would...
Right, and given that this will probably be on the town warrant article for November 4th meeting, and it's about $587,000, will, so, I mean, could be a little process?
I don't think that it will be.
Oh, because, well, that's a good question.
I mean, my, if I had to guess, I'd say it would probably be in the middle of town.
Okay. Because the feeling I have for the second meeting is that probably it's going forward.
You know, before you guess, why don't we just let the process play?
Sure, well, I'm trying to understand the process.
We're here for input, and if there are concerns that the planning board has, that we can take those into consideration. We know there are concerns that the neighbors have, and we want to take those into consideration as well.
As far as my, the only thing I see on this, and the only thing I would have an issue with, is the fact that you've kind of taken over Wilderness Road.
Right.
That would be concerning.
That's one of the planning board issues.
There are people that do go up and, I know you probably needed to turn around, and I, you know, for the amount of times that we had to turn trucks in and out, wanting, but if we did it so it didn't look like you actually took it over Wilderness Road...
It will be the passageway for the engines.
That's fine, that's okay.
It isn't just turning.
So if I can clarify a little bit, the area of that front apron is plenty of space to keep the fire apparatus off of Wilderness Road. That portion, I spoke with Jimmy Clyde, there's a 40-foot right of way, all the way up to the property line for the towns on Wilderness Road. We will have the apron where the trucks park out in front of the bays, and then there is plenty wide enough to use the trucks on occasion when they go to calls.
I think what you really need to do is when you redo this plan, make Wilderness Road a separate pile of the road. It looks like right now it's part of the site plan.
It is.
Yep.
It has.
As long as it's going to be used, ancillary, get the trucks in and out, and it's not going to block Wilderness, it's not going to be an issue. It just would look better if it was a separate, a status.
Yep, understood. That's simple enough to do.
But you understand it is the passageway with the go-go fire, is his...
It is currently.
Yeah.
We use that, we use Wilderness Road, we use the parking lot. Currently, there's parking in the center, and during church, during functions, apparatus leave the front, they go to the right side, they go to the left side. So we currently use that portion of Wilderness Road on a daily basis.
Okay, these are the questions you get, so, yeah, we're launching all this.
How many of us with the board?
Yeah.
You know us in the board?
They're people.
Yes, you don't want to stop.
Mr. Pickett.
All right, go ahead.
Hi, we're on 36 Foster Street, I'm one of the abutters, and I am firmly supportive of the fire department, I think they're great, but it does bother me, and I hear Keith saying that there really is, has been no formal analysis of alternative locations, and my understanding is that the main reason for staying there is that you can save about $2 million bucks because you've already got the shell of the building there. My concern is that the footprint's very small, you're really budding up against the limits as population grows or as we add sewers, and I really think that we should have, perhaps headed by the planning board, a review of what the options are. I hear this business about you're in the middle of town, but I look over at the peneus courts and the castle in the trees, and I say, boy, there is a roomy spot. If it's important to be in the middle of town, maybe you should move over there. Who has formally and comprehensively looked at these alternatives? That's what I would want the board to think about.
Thank you. Mr. Kelly, Chief Kelly, excuse me.
No, John Kelly, Fire Department. The discussion on this actually started back in 1998. I had memos to the board of selectmen at that time, PowerPoint from 2002 that discusses the substation within the planning of the new police station. I had a plan from 2002 that shows fire apparatus, bays with the police department, notes from the PMBC from 2004, plans from 2008 that actually show the fire department on the police department's site. The plans that went to the library to be viewed by the townspeople, the fire component was taken off because it was decided by the boards involved and the people involved that it wasn't a proper site for them to be involved with us. So in my mind, the police station where it currently exists was part of a study for a fire department move. We looked at nine sites, eight of those sites were turned down, we ended up where we are, and those individuals decided, that were involved in the project, decided the fire department best serves the community where it currently is located. I also have a memo from myself and then Chief Carter to the Board of Selectmen 2007 that lays that out, and basically states that the fire department should stay where they are, and the Board of Selectmen and other boards in town concur with that, and that's why you are where you are in our agreement now. Thank you.
Just to add a little bit to that, Chief Kelly's absolutely correct, there was a lot of effort put into this in the early stages of deciding that we needed a police station. And actually, the process of determining where the department might be situated began in 2002, well, even before then, with a strategic plan that the department had started to develop, where we looked at response times around the town, we had drawn dots on a map and rounding around several times, and came to the same conclusion that the town insists, or by having a fire station in a current location, yes, the town wishes to preserve the type of department that it currently has. So I think there's a lot of work that has been done in that, you know, maybe we have not retained an architect to do that, but it's, to my mind, it's common sense, it was then, it was as we went about the process of the police station, and it still is today, valid, that that is, that is the appropriate site for this facility.
So, if I may just have an answer to one of Mr. Pickett's questions, the, as far as the appropriate amount of space for the facility, it's, there's plenty of space, plenty of space for the current apparatus, and, you know, potentially slight space for our apparatus to expand, more so as in each individual piece of equipment. Over time, the apparatus is growing in size. The main issue is the personnel to operate the apparatus, not that we need additional stations and additional, and more equipment. We need the firefighters and EMTs to operate the apparatus that we have to... the apparatus that we have to be able to serve the community effectively. That's, that's what it comes down to, as far as space, that's, that's effective space to, to, you know, take us into the future. Yes.
Hi, I'm Joy Deary from Howard Avenue. So on the drawing, on the plan you have there, there's two dotted lines, is those the locations of the building where we have this spaghetti dinner and the former police station?
That's correct.
So then I see that those will be raised, and a lot of parking will be extended out behind it, correct?
Yes.
So, at the beginning, you said that the amount of parking will be increased with this new plan?
That's correct.
By how many spaces?
Twenty.
Twenty more spaces? It just seems kind of too bad to, like, take out all those trees, it's going to change the character of the neighborhood and the site quite a lot, I didn't know if the additional 20 spaces are really needed, or who can, you know, try to minimize caving.
Yep. It actually doesn't take out any trees, this is currently building and currently pavement right now, so we wouldn't lose any trees, we actually gained some more green space, and that's why we decided to finish, you know, eliminating more of the parking out in the front and add it in the, in the rear. By eliminating this building and, as well as the garage, that's currently all paved, it's just going to be a, you know, redesigning of the, how the current pavement sits.
Anyone else, did you have a question? Anyone else? Yes.
Just another question, what did you say the figures were for the design of it and the construction of it?
It's $578,000 for design, with the remainder for construction, so $6 million for construction.
$6 million on top?
It's, it's, yeah, that's correct, it's a $6.6 million project. Mrs. Leavitts?
Ruth Leavitts, 14 Foster Street, as the closest of Butters to the fire station. I'd like to say that I think we understand the town's need for large fire facilities, although in point of fact, it's really, as you were telling us in the meeting, that 75% of the calls down at the county that's invested, and only 25% for a fire station. So they, the mission of the fire station is changing over time, and the new increase in, the increase in personnel, it's getting to be a much busier place than it used to. So I think, I think neighbors are aware of the town's needs, but I would hope in this process that the town would also be aware of the neighbors' needs, and particularly in the appearance of the building, the, in the appearance of the building and some sensitivity to what's around it. This is a, this is a whole configuration of historic homes, of the two buildings in town that had the most historic of value as historic architecture, namely the Unitary and Church, and the Historical Society, formerly the Library. It's, I think, very important, and I hope the town will be sensitive to the need to design a building that's, that's made of good materials, of stone and brick, not, not cement and artificial clavicle, that will do justice to the neighborhood, and also to the fire station, and recognize the, recognize the respect of the value of the historic character of the, of the neighborhood. I think if those things are paid attention to, the support of the neighborhood will be much greater.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, when is your next meeting? Are you meeting with Selectmen next?
That will be the, that'll be the last board to give this presentation to, and then we have another open house on October 12th.
Thank you, and everyone's support of the fire department for their issues to be dealt with.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have a 8:15 zoning ballot, help us here, extensive recreation and open space.
That's correct.
Oh.
That she gloves on? Glass?
Okay, this is a public hearing, here's the announcement for it, public hearing, zoning amendment, extensive recreation. The Town of Littleton Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Thursday, September 12th, 2013, at 8:15 PM in Room 103 of the Shattuck Street Town Hall, 37 Shattuck Street, Littleton, Mass, to consider a zoning amendment according to Mass General Law, Chapter 48, Section 5. The proposed amendment is to assert a new extensive recreation and open space preservation zoning bylaw, and to delete the current definition of extensive recreation. The full text of the proposed bylaw is on file at the Town Clerk and Planning Board offices, and can be viewed during their office hours and online at www.littletonma.org, some information there. A person interested or wishing to be heard on the proposed zoning amendments should appear at the time and place designated. The Town of Littleton does not discriminate on the basis of disability. Further assigned translation of this hearing will be provided for the hearing appeared upon request by contacting the Planning Board Office at 976-542-4251 one week prior to the meeting date. Signed, Richard Crowley, Richard Crowley, Clerk.
Thank you, Don. Thank you all for coming, I'm going to do a brief presentation or an overview, because I think there's been a lot of misunderstanding or misconceptions about what we're trying to accomplish with this. It's, it looks like it's a really complex bylaw, but it really isn't. We've probably never done a bylaw like this because this bylaw is really directed towards a really finite group of people, the Hartwells, the Mathissons, the Pickens, the Coopers, the Wickhams, the Dirkys, the Yaps, the Sandersons, the Williamses. Those are all names that you probably have driven, driven on their streets from living in the Town of Littleton, because they've been the stewards of the land that is currently what Littleton is. They've been the farmers for 300 years that have made Littleton Littleton. We're coming to a point now, as we grow, that not every farmer can financially afford to keep the family farm, and we're seeing more and more farms going by the route of housing or something along that nature, and we came up with an idea, using the extensive recreation, to give the farmers in town, the stewards who have had this land for 300 years, another option other than just building housing, and as we all know, once you build a house, that land is gone. What some people don't understand is that by writing this bylaw, the farmer still gets to keep the family farm. If we do the 70/30 split, the farmer still has the right to continue to farm it, to continue to grow pumpkins, to continue to have an apple orchard in there, we are not taking that away from them, we're also not asking them to buy into this. The hope is that this bylaw never gets used because we don't want to develop anymore of the pristine land that we have in Littleton, but if we have to develop it, it's another alternative rather than the force housing in there. So it gives the farmers, the, the large landowners, the stewards in the Town of Littleton, an option, and they still keep their 70% that's left in its natural state, they don't have to donate it to the town, that's the difference. We're looking at the, the people that have had this land, that have called this their family farm, we're looking at that group. When we've done bylaws in the past, it's always been to the developer, the developer gets the land, he builds the houses, the land that's left over goes to conservation, or it goes to open space, or it goes to parking record, goes to the Town of Littleton. This is unique because this is their family farm, and this doesn't have to go, necessarily go to the people in the Town of Littleton. The farmer can still control the open space aspect of it, it will stay in, in perpetuity as what it is now, farmland, open space, an orchard, or a woodland, or something like that, that's the first difference. The second difference is, they don't have to do it. If, if they choose to go another route, no one's holding a gun to them, to their head, it gives an option, it gives an option, rather than building houses, or rather than taking all that 100 acres and building houses on it, you keep 70% of it in its natural state. We got a lot of letters from the Agricultural Commission, the Conservation Commission, everyone else said that they were, they have great points to them, but I think we're being premature because the con, the, the actual result of this bylaw is hopefully nobody's going to get that land, it's going to stay as farmland, the town will not see it, it'll stay in its natural state, if the, if the homeowner, if the landowner wants to donate it to the town, then that's when these issues should be, should be brought up, not as the disposition of the land, it's the intent of this bylaw to keep it the way it is now. So, I think that one of the misconceptions that this long bylaw brought out, but the intent is really going to be left up at the landowner, it's just another, as we say, another tool in the toolbox to give the landowner, the, the shepherds of these properties, another option rather than just build houses on the land. Having said that, I'll ask the board if they have any questions or concerns about it, and then I'll open it up for discussion.
Well, you know, I have concerns because I wrote four pages of comments, but I'm sort of curious about the public's comments. In my case, I think I'd be interested in talking afterwards, I'd like to hear.
But you're, and I want to address your, your concerns are all about conserving the land, conserving the land, this is a mechanism to conserve the land. I think we're losing sight of the fact that the primary goal of this whole bylaw is to conserve the land. We start fighting about whether it goes to conservation, or whether it goes to Conservation Trust, or whether it goes to farmland preservation, the primary interest of this is not to build houses, to conserve the land that we've all come to know and love in the town, the vistas, the open space, to conserve it, and the primary goal should be that, not who gets it.
Well, actually, my, my concern isn't so much who gets it, my concern is preserving, and much like there's a history of the fire station, police station, there's a history in town about what the public wants for that area, and it is being driven by a developer, and I think it will.
And that's where the mistake is, we all call this, this is reaction to the Fletchers, this is not about the Fletchers, this is about those people that I just told you, those are the big landowners in town. Yes, the Fletchers are the primary people pushing this, because they're the first people in line, but this is about the Mathissons, and the Hartwells, and the Coopers, Coopers is, is right there in the crosshairs as well, this is about all of them coming up with an alternative so that we don't have to see houses on there, we don't have to see everything squished over here, we get to see the, the orchards, and the open fields, and the, and the farmland preserved as it is because the farmers, the people that own it now are going to decide what the disposition of it is.
And I think that's good goal, good intent, but I don't think it's going to achieve that, and that's, that's where we differ. I, I think we share the intent and goal, but I, I would really be interested in hearing the public.
I think the problem is, and the reason we got all these letters is because everybody's worrying about the crumbs that are going to be left when everything's done. We should be more concerned and focused on making sure the bylaw works for the people that it's intended for, not so much that conservation's going to get it, or farm people are going to get it, or parking records, as long as it's preserved in some form or another, we don't see housing, we don't see urban sprawl all over there, that should be, as far as I'm concerned, that should be the primary focus of what happens to the land.
And my concern is, we will see sprawl, and there are, I mean, this is sort of unraveling it bit by bit, but even the 5% retail area that could allow, anything allowed in any of our business districts will be like a cookie cutter, riddling all these large areas, allowing office parks and restaurants and stuff, and places surrounded by residential property, I mean, I, I think that's sort of a flawed thing, in fact, as I mentioned, I don't know if the AG would approve it, because it seems like spot zoning all over, it's not, you know, the idea of zoning is that people know where to build, to be predictable, for one thing, developers, landowners, regulators, everyone else, everyone knows what they can do, what they can't do, and it's somewhat predictable, and you have areas, you have an urban center, or, or urbanized center where business, and certain things can be developed, you know, other areas are residential.
But that's why this is a special permit.
And what this does, I think, will allow a large number of landowners to obviously say, oh, they want it, and then the 5%, they can do office parks, they can do all sorts of stuff, and that will be riddled all throughout the town, because there, there's financial money to be gained from that, so I question.
And there's a problem with that?
Yes, because it breaks the whole idea of zoning, people know where they're living, and you have things as smack in front of you that were never allowed before. So I, I do think it's a concern, there's a concern about who, who administers and who grants it, which we all have dealt with.
Well, we haven't gotten to that part.
But there are a lot of areas.
My point was, I just wanted to make people aware that it's, it's a unique situation because we're dealing with landowners now, we're not dealing with developers, and that's why, that's why, well, no, it's not, that's why it's a difference, that's why, because it's now giving, in the past 200 years, 300 years, unless you're a Wickham, or a Hartwell, or a Sanderson, you're on pieces of somebody's farm that were broken off over the course, this is just a way to give them another option, rather than they keep raking up their family farm, as the taxes go up because we have to build a new $6 million fire station, and the people that have all this big land can't keep afford to pay the taxes, and we have to be, we have to be honest, we're blessed that we have so many landowners in this town that have large portions of land that have left them in their natural state. It's not going to stay that way forever, it's time to make sure that there is another option out there, rather than, right now, their only option is to develop it and build houses.
Well, except we did pass two bylaws recently, we revamped the farming bylaw, farmland protection bylaw, which allows farm-related restaurants and all sorts of things, and blacksmith shops, and it didn't take anything away from anyone, we said, okay, if you're active farm, here's extra ways of doing economic viability, you can do this additional stuff without any obligations from the other side, saying, okay, here's an opportunity.
But unfortunately, everything that we offered doesn't economically right now make sense for people.
Right, but we also did a second bylaw, open space development bylaw, that did give some concessions, and, you know, what the public has mentioned in previous meetings when we've looked at Area C, so-called Great Road Area, is they mentioned interest in saving agricultural land permanently, they had interest in saving the scene of vistas, they also interest in not having sprawl congestion, and I think those interests can be met with some way, but I don't think this does it, I think it actually works against it, even though that was the intent, and I think actually, a slight modification, open space development bylaw may allow some capability to afford that. I mean, this is proposed for extensive recreation, in fact, yeah, 100-acre parcel could be 100% commercial, active recreation, with a 5% retail, you know, starts looking a little bit like East Acton, that, that's my concern. I think there's a lot of work put into it, I think there is some intent to, to meet some of the goals you mentioned, at least some folks, but one of the things is, this is a purpose, is economic development, I mean, you know, was that really the ten, I mean, if what you're mentioning.
Is this the Don Show, or can we include somebody else in this?
Well, we can include, I, I actually want the public to, to talk.
All right, let's, Peter, what are you, Peter, what are you up to?
I, let's, please, go that way.
I was going with us first, and then I was going out.
I'll wait my turn.
Okay. Do you have anything to say? I don't know. Listen to.
I want to know how you get to the 100%.
Oh, no, 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 no.
No, I want to hear, because a lot of people wrote about it, how do you get to 100%?
Because the way things are listed.
And I want to hear council confer, whether that's true or not.
I think the council mentioned that the 70% could look very much like the 30%, you can charge a commercial fee for active recreation, if those are called protected open space, it isn't by the standard terms, and it is actually council's comment saying that 70% could look like the 30%, so ask town council.
Is that, is that true?
I think one of the ways one of these developments could manifest is commercial development on the 30, and fields on the, on the 70.
I mean recreational.
Recreational facilities on, on the 70.
It can be commercial recreational, because that is what it is.
It would need to be available east of the town.
So it's built up, here we have a commercial component?
Oh, built up what? Built up field?
Ball fields.
Yeah, what, arenas, stadiums, yeah, whether the police. It's active recreation, which means built recreation.
You're applying this definition.
This is a standard definition.
No, no, you're saying things like built up, you don't even define what that means.
Active recreation, in fact, there's a definition that says town-based active recreation, which co-mingles passive recreation, active recreation, which most people do not do. But I've been doing this for 40 years, people do not typically do that, they're promising some of the definitions.
So, in your scenario, this is what, this is what I asked in the last meeting we had, was the scenario that's out, you're saying that in the, the way the current bylaw's written today, 70%.
No, the current bylaw is only 82 words, it's almost nothing.
No, I mean the one we proposed.
Proposed, the A-page one, yeah.
We would have, the 30%, my understanding is to allow a sustainable commercial component, right? The 70% intent was to keep that. The 70%, the intent was to keep that open space, which you're saying conceivably, somebody could develop that for commercial repri- He's saying that.
He's saying it could look the same, which meant if the town, if he gave it to the town and built it as ballfields, and donated the ballfields, then the 100% could look the same because you would have, say, a soccer facility on the 30%.
Ask him if that's what he's saying.
And then ballfields donated for town use on the 70.
On the 70%, you could put outdoor organized sports field for soccer, baseball, softball, lacrosse, or similar, whether natural or artificial turf. And trails for hiking, snowshoeing, cross-country skiing, bicycling, horseback riding are similar. Which, any of which would need to be available for use by general public.
But there's also talk about you could charge fees in the commercial.
So there is something to the concern.
So it won't be the landowner's land anymore?
Right, yeah, well, effectively not.
But the point is-
We're taking 70% of our value.
No, 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 wait a second. The point is, you don't have to-
Are you selling your house that's worth $600,000 to $200,000?
Danny, the point is, you don't have to do that. If you want to take the 30-
So it was all about making it equal. If we went to sell the place, that the value would be equal of when we sold the houses.
Well, wait, 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 stop. Just, effectively, he's right. But I think the offset's supposed to be that 30% commercial we give you is supposed to offset your cost. Now, I don't know if economically, that's really what would happen. But that's the spirit of the swap. Now I'm gonna talk, okay?
Go talk.
Here's where it started. Is Doug here? Did he just walk out? This is where it started with the 70, 30. Is a conversation you had with the Fletchers, and they determined that 30% of what they had left was what they needed to turn into. This started out as the Fletcher Show, okay? Now it's turned into, that's what it started out, is that simple.
And the Fletchers don't want that anymore?
I think I was talking. So when the last meeting came about, and there was a bunch of other recreational people and large landowners came in, and they said, well, like Danny, 70, 30, whatever, I get 30, you get 70, I don't like the odds. Well, it doesn't make sense. It really doesn't. What it should be, again, is a fair amount to what- And one project could put in a shooting range and make nothing. Another one could put in, you know, a driving range and make a ton of money off of golf balls. It could be, it depends on each situation, I think, will make a difference. The 70, 30 may not be the right number. It may not be the, and this is where we should have, obviously, had the large landowners in from day one, and the farmers, and the people that were wanting to make hockey rinks and ballfields and all the other things, should have been in it in the beginning. But we did what we could with what we had, and the board was a good board, I think. This is where we are. Now we need to fix what you don't like. You want 60, 40? I think that's not a bad deal.
What about people on the back road?
Pardon?
What about people on the back road that don't have two-way frontage? What are they gonna get out of it?
I don't, you know, a road down to a nice, I don't know. You know, I don't know. I can't predict, I mean, if you want.
That's only if you want to do it, Danny.
You don't have to.
But you're doing it for the Fletchers, to make this whole thing for the Fletchers.
We're doing it for the entire town.
Doesn't mean that recreational's gonna-
There won't be a point where there's no more- Danny, there'll be a point where there's no more recreation. We got too many ballfields and not enough people to put on them. It will get to that point.
But Danny, as far as your stuff goes, you keep saying, you can keep the 70%. You can still grow pumpkins on it. The difference between this and our open space bylaw that we're doing for housing right now is the homeowner, the landowner, gets to decide the disposition of the 70%. If you want to do nothing with it and still control it, and still own it, and still do farming on it, you can.
That's what you said two weeks ago.
No, it's always been that way.
That's not what you said two weeks ago.
That's not what you said two weeks ago.
We'll do what we want with it.
No, I didn't.
And Jerry spoke up to you.
Yeah, you can do whatever you say.
Listen to Jerry right now. Listen to some other people now, I think it's-
Read what the bylaw says.
The bylaw says, it doesn't have to go. It can go, but it doesn't have to. It's up to the homeowner, the landowner, to decide what the ultimate disposition of the 70%. Yes, the town would love to take it for open space, and yes, they'd love it for ballfields and stuff. But we don't have, it doesn't have to go that way. If the person, and this is, and like I told you from the start, this is the first time we've dealt with primary owners of the land. Developers usually don't want the land. They want to build their 40 houses, and then the leftover land, they don't want to bother with it. They don't want to mow it. They don't want to do anything. They want to give it to us. This is the first time we're actually talking about land that the farmers and the landowners in the town of Littleton have called their family farms for 300 years. They're the ones that decide where they want it, where they're gonna go.
There are two sides to this, right? This is not like the open space bylaw. This is not like a subdivision. This is a special permit, which means we have discretion to say no. We don't have to go fight about it. So if somebody comes and proposes something, and we don't like it, we can say no, which we couldn't do with Army, right? So that's one side. The other side is-
Whoever's the SPGA.
The other side is, we could also say yes, and give the town something they don't like. So there's two edges. We could abuse it, or we could conserve it.
Let's not clear who the SPGA is.
Yes, ma'am, name, please, to Marlon.
Joanne Deary from Coward Avenue. I just want to, most respectfully, Mr. Montanari, disagree with the comment you made that it's not the Fletcher bylaw. It's not the Fletcher bylaw. Why do we have so many people unhappy with it, and yet we're still trying to drive it through in time for an November Town Meeting? This is a really important change, and it's gonna affect our community for decades and generations to come. We can't rush it. We can't. We have to do it right, and I don't think we should be rushing it for Town Meeting because there's one party in town that wants to see it.
If you people don't think it's ready before it's before Town Meeting, we still have, we still have two months to deal with it, to work on it, and everything else like that. Well, we're not gonna bring an article that people aren't gonna want to support. We want it done right. And I don't, I don't think it's rushing when we took all summer long to start working on it. It's now September. We have till November to make it, to tweak it. Hopefully, we don't tweak it too much that Chris says it's, you have to start from scratch. But we're not gonna bring an article, obviously, we're not gonna bring an article to Town Meeting that people don't want. Jenna.
Jenna Brownson, Ward Slough. But I was on the working draft group. And I have two concerns. Number one is stemming from what Jerry just said, where he said, we can say no. My concern is that someone comes before the board, this board, a board in 10 years, whomever it may be. You say no, and that person says, well, but my attorney says, this fits within the four corners of this bylaw. You don't like it, I'm gonna go and appeal it. And in the end, someone's gonna sit and judgment on, well, it's written there that you can do it. Just because they said no, doesn't mean that they get to say no. It's within the four corners of the draft. The other comment I have is that I live on land that my parents purchased decades ago across the street from Will Taker's dairy farm. And I imagine this bylaw would touch to him. I did not, I'm not living in that, on that property with the expectation that there's going to be a mini-march, and mini-golf, and the this, and the that. I live across the street from a dairy farm, which is zoned residential. If the day comes that Will and his family decide to sell, my expectation is that there'll be houses and some open space as per what's expected per residential zoning. To my mind, what we tried to accomplish got really messy, and it's not something which I believe is ready for the vote as a farmer.
I just want to make sure we address the point you were just pulling.
Yeah.
So Chris, is that, is that true? If we deny a special permit, my understanding is we have way more denial discretion over a special permit than we do over, say, the open space or definitive subdivision.
Absolutely. With the definitive subdivisions, you know, you have your regulations, and if subdivision meets the regulations, you are obligated-
You have to do it.
With a special permit, you've always had discretion, one way or the other. But I would put a caveat on that, slight caveat on that, which is that in this bylaw, you are identifying a range of uses that you are saying are generally okay in this kind of development. So I would want the board to be confident that all of the uses that you're identifying, calling out in this bylaw, are ones that you may be generally comfortable seeing in one of these developments. The kind of uses you're looking, you believe, as a planning board, are generally going to be ones that you-
So we could be challenged, and we could lose. And the only-
No, no, I mean, this is a very real thing. Because we've already been down this road this year.
All I'm saying is that when establishing a new special permit bylaw, you were basically calling out a certain set of uses that are going to be okay in some circumstances and not okay in others. And the circumstances in which they're gonna be okay are ones that you call out in the bylaws. You establish a set of criteria where this set of uses are generally gonna be allowed. You have discretion, but I just want the board to be careful that all the things you're saying could go into one of these developments are things that would generally be something you would permit in a special permit.
Just to add on to that-
More detail. You could do anything in the village common, anything in the business district. So the only things that are eliminated, manufacturing, adult entertainment, and vehicle sales. That's it. Because someone could argue, ah, well, all these other things are allowed, and they could do anything more in this residential area, some residential area than any other part of town.
You also have the power in closed conditions in a special permit, which you don't.
But someone could challenge it.
But you can always challenge.
Yes.
Amy Cruz, I am a fairly large landowner in town, and I'm also the Chair of the Agri-Pulpo Commission. The September 4th meeting, we pulled in some of the larger landowners in town, mostly all in Chapter 61A, for an open discussion to see how they felt about this proposal. And I agree with what Ms. Gary said and what Ms. Brownson said. I think when we had seen this, we kind of all felt alone as if we were being targeted for owning an heirloom, whether we're working it, or we're holding on to it as an investment, a retirement fund. No matter what we're doing, it's open. We pay our taxes. By speaking with everyone in that room, the 70%, 30% split is completely unfair. Might work for the Fletchers, but it's not gonna work for everybody. And to us, it sounded like a taking because it's gonna have to go by each property, no matter what they're gonna do. The main purpose of this is to give the landowners an incentive not to build houses, to put some more land aside. What incentive is there for us? I'm zoned residential. I can put a lot of houses in. A lot of my land is appraised at $150,000 an acre. This wouldn't work for me, and this wouldn't work for a lot of the folks in this room. And there's a lot of those landowners sitting here tonight, and I suggest that you let them speak because you need to hear their feedback because they're the ones that this is gonna affect.
Absolutely. That's what we'd like there. We should have heard it further on way back years ago.
Well, a lot of the discussion that we've heard has been all over the place. It's not adding up. We've heard so many different things, and everybody is, it's kind of a mess. And it's definitely gonna be completely rushed for Fall Town Meeting. It needs to wait. This is a serious, serious issue, and we need to have a lot more discussion. And November, you say it's far away, it's really not. We're in the middle of September now.
Yeah, it's right around there.
So they're in this room, and I see some of them raising their hand, and I suggest you hear them out.
Absolutely. Yes, sir.
Edward Mish, Grimes Lane. If I take my property and I turn it into this, and whatever I do with the 30% fails, then I have 30% I could sell off, and I have 70% that I can't do anything with. So this proposal, in my aspect, I wouldn't even try it. I would sell it for houses, right away.
Okay, but that, I mean, that is definitely a business decision on your part.
Yes, I'm just saying-
You know, we're not prescribing-
I'm just saying that, well, let me continue here.
Wait. No, go ahead.
The 70% is ridiculous. Change that down so it's something else. So if I do do that, and it doesn't work out, then I have options. I don't have any options with this. This would be ridiculous. And if you thought about it yourself, nobody is gonna give 70% of their value of whatever they own away, just to save 30%.
Okay, just for the record, I would never do this, myself, personally.
Nobody would.
Nobody would.
None of us would.
Nobody. But wait, but just, wait a second. The only reason why we're having this conversation is because we agreed in January or February that this is what we would work to over the summer to get to an agreement with the Fletchers. Otherwise, they were gonna build houses. That's why we're doing this.
That's why we're here.
That's it.
Well, that's why they didn't do that with Fletcher. Why do everybody else?
Well, the other option was, there were two options on the table, right? We either, we either go down this road, or we talk about rezoning that area, that was another option. We chose to go down this road. Nobody made any promises that the town was gonna vote this in. I mean, all we're gonna do is, all we're gonna do is throw this on the floor, and the town's gonna go, cut our vote for it. It's over.
You don't have to do it. The part you don't, you don't have to, you don't have to do anything.
My family has been here for a long time. And we've gone under 61A, paid our taxes, had the woods cut. I never wanted the woods cut, but it's mandated under 61A that we do this. I cried when I had to cut my woods down. I didn't, now I can't even walk out there because there's no paths left. It's all wooded junk. I would have just left it there, let it be an old forest. I could have walked on the paths and just left it alone. You're setting this up for failure for us. We're just trying to live and be out there, and just pay our taxes, and just keep it natural. But 70%?[1555.14]
It's the proposal.
I don't think any of you would give up 70% of your homes.
We're not asking you to give it up.
This is if I want to put it in recreation. If I want to put it in recreation, this is. So you're wrong. You are asking us to do that.
It's conditional.
Then the option would be to sell. Forget the, forget the recreation, sell it and put it in housing.
You have, you have that right now. We're not.
But why would we? If I wanted to put it in recreation, I have to do this. At least recreation, I could do something, but I can't do anything with this.
Oh, wait, 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 wait. I mean, if you decided to put your lot in recreation, and you didn't want to have a 30% commercial component, you wouldn't have to. You don't have to put a 30% commercial component.
No, but now how would I get commercial?
But you don't want commercial.
If you wanted to commercial, then that's what you'd have to do.
You're saying recreation.
Right.
I have to have some commercial in there. I have to follow this.
If you wanted it.
If you wanted.
If you wanted.
Again, how would I not?
How does he get his hot dog stand?
He does it. That's why you have to have some mechanism.
Well, that's what I'm saying. This wouldn't work.
But you can have, what, you can have a hot dog stand under the farming bylaw.
If we're associated.
If you're already working farm, you can put a hot dog stand up.
Yeah, but where they are.
That's not a farm. Now I'm going in recreation.
They're near industrial.
Two different bylaws.
He's right on industrial zone land, with the commercial buildings. Doesn't mean he's going to have recreation up there.
Probably not.
Probably not.
So you put it right for the Fletchers for everybody. That's wrong.
All right, come on, let the Fletchers speak.
Doug Duchene, I'm attorney that represents the evil Fletchers. I guess I'm a little taken aback by the perception of all of this and the direction. My clients, like many of you, are large landowners. They don't consider themselves farmers. They don't want to be farmers. Some of their property has been farmed, but they're not farmers. They're recreational people. But they have beautiful land that I know that people in Littleton, a lot of people would love to see preserved and not be hosed. Quite frankly, but they don't want to see homes there either. But what do you do when you own all this land? And ma'am, when you put yourself under 61A, whether it's agricultural, or forestry, or anything else, you do that so that your taxes will be dramatically cut. And, and so there is a cost to that. You have to forested it, or you have to agriculture it. So that's voluntary. For someone that wants to not do anything with their land and keep it untouched, you don't have to put it into 61A, pay your taxes, and you can do, your land can stay unpreserved. But the Fletchers find themselves in a position where they do not want to own and have the burden of the taxes of that large parcel of property. It's zone residential. They have one option. They can develop, sell it, and somebody will develop it as homes. And that, as they understand it, is not anything anyone really wants to see. They want to see it preserved. Well, that's great, but I know you guys can agree with me with this. Everybody wants you to preserve your land. That's great, but they're not paying taxes on it. And they're not the ones who might need money down the road, or their family might need money, so the only thing they can do is sell their taxes. So this, we looked at ways to try and get the Fletchers to be able to develop some of their land. And not all of it. They're willing to develop a parcel and preserve a parcel, and contribute to the, the goal of saving farmland and saving visitors and all of that. Don't think anyone can accuse the Fletchers of that, because they're trying to avoid developing in all his houses. But they got to do something. So you have an agricultural bylaw which allows farmers, and I know, Don, you are a big supporter of this, allows farmers to do some commercially related activities to maybe generate some additional income from their, from their property. The recreational bylaw is just another opportunity. Nobody has to take advantage of it. And can some people more likely to take advantage of it than others? Sure. But that's also true with developing your homes. Some people's farmland is prime development for residential, and you're going to get huge dollars for it. Other people's farmland, not so much. I mean, that, we can't, we can't do anything about where the land is and, you know, whether, what's good for us. But this bylaw was intended, and yes, part of it was motivated by the fact that the Fletchers have been working for four years to try and figure a way to address this quandary, where they need to sell some land, they need to raise some capital, but they, they don't want to see their, all their property developed as homes. So this was meant to be another option to you. You don't have to do it. You don't have to take advantage of it. You could do recreation and not do a 5% commercial. You don't have to. What that was meant to do was, you know, recreational development is difficult to be economically viable. And scary, okay? How many months do you get to make money? Not many. If it doesn't snow, you're really in trouble.
Kind of the same one, do a farmer.
True, and true. But, but the point is, this was meant to give landowners an option.
No, Fletcher's an option, not landowners.
Yes, not us.
Well, I, I'm sorry, but this is a general bylaw that will apply to anyone owning a parcel of a certain size.
But that doesn't work for everybody.
Exactly.
Yes, sir.
Nor does it develop housing, nor does farming. Okay?
It's for the Fletchers.
It's not for everybody.
Yes, sir.
My name's Brad Mitchell, I live in Harwood Avenue, also director of government affairs for Mass Farm Bureau. Everybody wants to preserve land. Everybody. Everybody in this room, whether you're a landowner, you're a farmer, you're an organic person, you're the Fletchers, everybody wants to do it. I moved here because there was a lot of open space, and I wanted to pay more taxes, I supported buying church land. This is great for the Fletchers. I think it's a perfect plan for the Fletchers. They like it, the town likes it. It doesn't mean it works for the Pickards, the Cruises, or anybody else in land. You've taken a formula that works for one parcel in town, and you're putting it onto everybody else. And that's just bad policy. This is government by formula. Will's piece of park land is very different from Jamie's. It's got different values, it's got different commercial values, it's got different agricultural values, it's got different environmental values, open space values. Why would you take the same percentage that works for the Fletchers? And I'm, I, I support it. I give it to the Fletchers. Nobody in here opposes that. They just don't want it put on them. As I leave this, you're essentially taking value away from the landowners. That has a number of ramifications. Okay? It has ramifications for the farm who wants to go borrow on that land to make capital improvements. Now, since they're celebrating their 300th anniversary, they just did a capital improvement. They borrowed on that land based on the value of that land. If you say 30%, if you start parsing it out, what can and can't be developed, that value goes down. Jamie's going to be making some capital developments, I'm sure. Will will. This is modeled very closely after 61A. 61A, for those of you who don't know, you can reduce land rate, the town gets the right of first refusal to go in and buy it, if you decide to change the use. The difference between what you're proposing and what this does is, the town buys it. They just don't specify how it's going to use. They paid rate, they paid the value of that land, the market value of that land under 61A. You kind of left that part out.
Chairman, if I could just answer that question, as he decided to cut in on me.
He called in.
How can you say that this bylaw is taking anything away from a landowner, when what it's doing is providing you an option? Whether it works for you or not, it's an option that you can choose to, to, to take advantage of, or choose not to. They're not imposing anything on you. And you know, it's funny where.
Is it an option if you want to develop the land, or is it mandatory?
Is one an option. If you want to do something that's not allowed in your current zone, i.e. residential, then you have to choose this, and you take the restrictions and go with it.
Right, so it's not an option.
Danny, you don't have to do anything.
But what I'm suggesting is, just like the Fletchers have come and basically worked out a deal where it works for them, I have no problem with that. That's great. But it may not be the same deal with something Jamie wants to do, or something Will wants to do. This 70/30 doesn't work for everybody. You've taken something that works for one landowner, and I'm glad it works for them, I think you ought to give it to them. I think it's in the best, their interest, it's in the town's interest. But I don't think it should have to apply to everybody else in town. It's a different equation, different land values, different commercial values, different environmental values. Government by formula doesn't work, guys.
I got a question. If we say, we take the 100-acre thing, and let's do this 70/30, just, and again, I don't think it's entirely fair either for everybody, so. And again, it was a number that we started with, so here we sit. If you had 100 acres that was worth $1,000 an acre, it's worth $100,000, right? If you have, is that the right numbers? So now we turn around, we say, all right, how much is commercial land worth? How much is, is commercial worth twice the value of residential?
Not quite.
I, I, I don't know. I never had, I never.
Not all commercial land's the same value.
Okay, so, can you take a, is it worth 75% of, of more?
Either, is it worth it's on 2A, or it's on 3B?
Right. All right, so, so again, I understand, we're not, we're not going to force the peg in the square hole, all right? 70/30 will not work for everybody. It, it works for them in that instance, so what?
Because they're already an established business.
Okay.
Please let him finish. You do have a point.
I'm trying to get this. We, now you're going to, now, huh? Now you're going to cut to the chase? All right.
Just digest version.
All right, so you're trying to come up with a value.
So what I'm trying to say is, if the value of, of residential and commercial are two different numbers, then what would be a fair assessment of the value of a, of commercial versus residential? That would make that 50/50, 60/40. 70/30 doesn't work for everybody. Can it be left in, it can, and again, this number is, we put in, I'm, I'm scared of it. I mean, would I give up, like you say, would I give up 70% of my, my land? But if I took 30% of it, and I kept the 70 that was still farmed, I still put hay, I still mill?
Who says there's going to be anybody that'll bail hay?
Huh?
Who says there's going to be anybody that'll, they'll bail hay 50 years from now?
Well, I'm not saying there is, but if, if you took your land and put, if you have 100, and you took 30 acres of it and put a component on it, but then you said, "I'm not going to develop this out of the 70," the way it is now, but I can still, I can still mow it, I can still pumpkin it, I can do whatever I want, I'm just not going to put houses on it. Would that be fair?
No.
All right, what would be fair? 50/50?
We have to look at the value of land, and Will's land on Bruce Street's going to be a different value than my land on 2A.
Okay. What would, what would you say would be a fair assessment?
I can't say anything, because this got thrown down our throat.
I'm asking you a question. This isn't law. It's not, it's not, it's, you can do anything you want. I'm asking you a question to answer. Sir, I don't know your name, I forgot your name.
It's Brad Mitchell. But see, the value of that land, I see what you're trying to get at, and I think it's smart. The problem is, we have value of the land, if you get an economic boom, his land on 2A is worth more now.
Right.
And if you get a housing boom, Will's land may be worth more. So it's up and down, it's all over the place. That's probably the reason why this percentage split doesn't work.
What would you say, what, I, what's a fair way to go about it then?
Well, I mean, typically, don't you guys get a proposal like you do with the Fletchers, and look at those factors and negotiate it on a case-by-case basis?
No, you can't do that. You can't do it. We're not.
What are you doing right now?
This is a special permit. We're not, we're not spot zoning property.
You're saying 70/30 for the Fletchers.
It's a special permit. He'd have to apply for it. This is not a spot zone change. If we spot zone change, we zone, we zone his lot commercial.
But I think you have to see that what works for the Fletchers may not work if Will wants to do something different on different valued land.
All right, this is all predicated in the fact that right now, you're zoned agricultural, residential, residential. That's your only option. We're giving you another option. If you wanted to go commercial, and you looked at that 30% that you could develop, and you said, "All right, the return on that is worth enough to offset the 70% loss that you're going to get." If you could do those numbers, and you said, "That works for me from a business standpoint," then you would do this deal. If those numbers don't work, then you develop houses.
But even from the town's viewpoint, do you really want Will to commercially develop any of his land in that portion?
It's not, we don't want.
Do you want to even allow them to?
They're coming to us, asking for that.
Like I said, we don't want to develop the land. We don't want anyone to use this bylaw. Our hope is that nobody ever uses it. We just want to put it out there so that if you have, if you're painted into a corner right now, and all your options are to build houses, this gives you another option so that 70% of your 100, 100 acres will be, we guarantee it'll be preserved.
But that won't work for Will.
It, him, you, anybody. What we're saying is, you still can build houses anytime you want.
But it can be a different number. It doesn't have to be 70/30.
Well, you're not saying that, Peter.
I'm saying, I said it since I started. I'm sorry.
All right. I'm Cindy Durkey Curran, and I'm on Brian's Lane. And what he's trying to say is, you cannot set a percentage. And I believe that he's right. And you're saying you're giving us an option. Well, I find this to be a very frightening option, because if I came in with a proposal for the planning board, and I said, you know, I want to change zoning, or I want something to happen, you guys are now going to have this bylaw, and you're going to say no, unless you give us 70%.
No.
No.
No, 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 no. Well, wait, wait, wait.
This town already operates that way in certain boards.
No.
Well, wait, wait, wait. If you came in front of us and you said, "I want to put, I want to, I want to put a strip mall, a dry cleaner on my land, I don't want any houses, or I'll follow the whole thing under payment," we'd say no. And if you fought us, you'd lose, because you're just not zoned that way. If you said, "I want to go in front of the town and propose that my lot be rezoned," you'd have to put that proposal in front of the town and pass a town floor vote. That's the only way you could win. That's the way, that's the way it stands right now.
Or I would be leveraged to give 70% to the town.
In return for a commercial, wait, in return for a commercial component.
Right.
But that's your business decision.
You don't have to give it. You can grow Christmas trees on it still, and still cut those Christmas trees, and charge $50 a Christmas tree, and still put 30% of tho, that 100 acres.
I'm too old now, my back won't grow Christmas trees.
But that's the alternative, rather than put houses there. We're offering you an alternative, rather than put houses there.
You're also offering yourself an alternative.
What alternative we're offering ourselves?
Yeah, you are, Mark.
You outsource.
You're taking 70% of all that.
Danny, you can still keep your 70%.
Nobody's allowed making it.
Yeah, no.
Yeah, what you said, Jerry agreed with.
The net effect is, the net, we're not taking it, I mean, you're still going to pay taxes on it, but we're not.
Yeah, we're going to pay taxes.
You just can't do anything with it.
He can still bail it.
That's the fact.
All it would have would be a, a restriction to not be able to put houses on it. That's all it would have. You can do everything else with it. Yes, Jamie?
On page four, under the proposed bylaw draft, the protected open space may be, and you have three different options that you can choose from there. We grant it over for park recreation, or general municipal use, owned by a nonprofit organization, or owned by a corporation or trust. So that goes against everything that you just said, that the landowner could continue to operate it and own it as long as it was under the bylaw.
Yeah, you can lock it up.
I did read number three, and that's how I take it, and that's how every landowner
in the agricultural commission, meaning agriculture.
Doug, do you want to, do you want to explain how we?
Well, then, then maybe the, the problem is that the wording needs to be made a little clearer, but it says, owned by a corporation or trust, established and owned jointly or in common by all the landowners of the recreation development property. The landowner who's developing the property can, can retain ownership. And it goes on to say that if they retain ownership, they can still use that open space for their farm purposes and, and everything else. I'm sorry if the language maybe isn't as clear as it could be, but the, if the problem is making it clearer, that's different than condemning the whole thing, just because it's not.
Don't be letting Tom try to just speak. Go ahead, please.
Wait, would you mind, let him, we brought Tom on today, let him, let him explain it.
Sure. C can be made, I think, more complicated than the, can be a complicated scenario if, if we have several different landowners all cobbling together parcels to make a big expensive recreation development. If there is one and only one landowner, that landowner could establish a corporation or trust for purposes of maintaining custody of the 70% set aside. Could play around with that language a little bit, but the intent of C is, was to leave it in the control of the landowner.
Correct. It was always to leave it in control of the landowner.
Do you mind if you take a value, a lot of value away from that?
Oh, absolutely.
Or a working farmer. I mean, we see this with APR, the agricultural people unwittingly bought it, and now they can't borrow land to make capital.
Right.
It's not a real option for most farmers.
To, to your point, it, we had a, we had a presentation given to all the boards when we first met back in, I don't know, April, June. One of the options was doing a, a buyout of your development rights. That was another option. There were several options that came out of the bylaw from what's a framing, what town did we?
Ipswich.
Ipswich. So there was three options. This was one of the options, what we're proposing now. One of the other options was, there was renumeration. So it's, it's just, just the way this went. It could have gone another way. This, or again, I forgot your name, I'm sorry.
Ed Mish. Again, on, let's see, page five. You talk about inadequate maintenance of the property. What does that mean? And if this inadequate maintenance is not done, you can force us to do it, and we will pay, we have to pay for that, we can't buy. What does inadequate maintenance mean? Under 70%?
Because you need to keep the property up.
Well, I don't know what that means. What does that mean?
Yeah, what does it mean, Matt?
What does it mean?
Well, I.
Keep the property up. I don't know what that means.
Keeping a lawn.
I can't cut, I can't cut any of the trees.
Who said you can't?
It says it right here.
You guys drafted it.
Hold on a second, I got to.
Can I make a suggestion? I mean, I've worked with agriculture for 20 years and I learned very quick. I mean, you started out your presentation saying, we did this to help the farmers and the landowners. You want to do that, you start by talking to them. And what I'm hearing here didn't really happen.
Perfect. We asked that four years ago and I'm willing to go back.
Whatever reason it didn't happen.
When did you ask me, Matt?
Whatever reason it didn't happen, can I suggest you might want to start again by sitting down with them?
You know, I have no problem doing that. If the, if the people that came out for this meeting, including you, Danny, want to sit down and go over what you can and can't live with, I'd be happy to do that.
I'd like to start starting at scratch.
Can I get that back again?
Sure, go ahead again.
Page eight. Activity is not allowed. Shall not perform or commit to be performed any cutting of trees. What if the trees are, you know, I'm trying to do the agricultural and the trees are bothering my agricultural because I can't, they're leaning over or anything like that.
This would, this would be in the 70% we'd be talking about.
Yes, this is 70%. Now you said I could, I could marm this land. Well, I can't cut trees and the trees are bothering me.
That is, that section deals only with the time period while the application is pending. Someone submits an application, they got to say.
Trade that to him, please.
That section deals only, is in effect only while the application is pending. So if you apply for the best permit, you can't cut your trees.
Does it say that here?
That's what it says.
So you prevent doing a Robert Walker cornerstone place where you just knock down all the trees.
You know, I, yes, sir.
I just had Dave Altman, Harvard Road. I just had some, we've heard a lot about, and the initial intent was this is geared towards large landowners, but under ownership, page three, section 173, 200, is that this can in effect be done by, as town council said, a cobbling together. So in some ways, it really is about potentially much more than just large landowners here. I mean, we could be looking at these sorts of recreational developments popping up all over if five, 10 acre, you know, handful of folks get together and decide that they want to have some sort of go-kart track or whatever it might be. So I'm just curious as to if this, if the intent here was to speak towards the larger landowners of town and provide them flexibility and options, why was the ownership structured this way? Like folks could cobble things together.
The reason was because some large parcels are owned by multiple members of the same family. We wanted to keep it that way so that they could still maintain their ownership and yet put it together.
I could think contiguous are completely unrelated owners.
And they're contiguous but different family members. That's, that was our intention there. That's why we limited it to 40 acres. Anyone else?
I'm Joanne Deary from Harvard Avenue. I just wanted to talk about the protected open space section on page four. If I look at the last paragraph on, well, it's like on, it's the fifth paragraph down, like two thirds of the way down the page. It says, protected open space, I assume that's 70%, may be used for active recreation, town-based active recreation. So to me, that's not protected open space. That means you went in there, you graded the site, pulled out a bunch of dirt, maybe put in like ball fields or, that's not open space. That's not preserving the vistas or the agricultural soil that might be there on the site. And I just don't see why you have anything in here about protected open space when.
Because every piece of land is going to be different. Some pieces are going to lend themselves for farming.
It doesn't protect open space. There's nothing, the words are in here, but there's nothing in here that actually protects the 70% set aside or whatever the percentage ends up being.
It's all for you and not for the landlord.
It's not.
Mr. Moore.
I still haven't known what inadequate maintenance is.
You get a building and it's falling apart. How's that for inadequate?
I probably have a small building anyway.
Is it supposed to be next weekend?
You've got one vote to take tonight whether to refer to board of selectmen to be on town any warrant. You can always pull it if you do that. And then you've got to decide if you're going to continue the public hearing.
I'm going to take the team's question. And I'm going to ask your question.
Even Tarla Lewis at Trier Mega Way, my question, my comment really is that, you know, my, I know the farmers and the large landowners are concerned with the 70-30 split and I'm empathetic with that. My concern within the 70-30, 70% is slightly different. So the 30% you can develop commercially, but the other 70%, that also can be commercial because you, according to this, you can put in a water park, you can put in go-karts. I mean, that's not a preservation of the basic farmland. That's commercial. So essentially, 100% of someone's property could be commercial. And that's all up and down 119 and Route 2. And that's all over different areas of town. I mean, in this worst case scenario, this is a disaster for the town.
Can you do a water park?
I mean, why are things like water parks and arenas and stadiums in here? I mean, that's not language that fits with the character of this town. Why people moved here?
Or do you have the golf course on it?
Yes.
And then it goes down. And then it goes down from 70 to 20. It's a golf, there's, protected open space just seems to be worse.
This is not relevant to November. No one likes this. Wilton Conservation Trust like it and AdCom doesn't like it. When do they ever agree? They don't, they agree now. Like, that's your sign.
Let me ask a question. We have to make a decision on whether we want to put this to selectmen. My, I'm just going to guess that maybe you guys aren't real thrilled with that. If I could get the large landowners to sit down with us and, and work on this again, I would, I would pull the board to see if we want to pull this until, reluctantly pull this until a fall town meeting or something like that. As long as we could get Mr. Pickard.
Pull it till fall town?
Spring.
I mean, excuse me, spring town meeting. Spring town meeting. Spring town meeting and then get Mr. Mish and, and man, I forgot your name also.
Oh, it's Martha Peet.
Work with you to start off with.
Why don't you just work with the Fletchers?
No, because I'm asking.
There's so many different interests.
Doesn't it make more sense? We've been trying for four years to get all the large landowners in town together to sit down.
Fletchers have been trying to get this project through for the last four years.
And we've also tried to, tried with the extensive farming bylaw and all those others to get. I'm asking, I'm asking you if you want me to pull this as long as we can get the large farmer, the large landowners in town to work, come back to the board and will sit down and work on a new bylaw if that makes more sense.
People are raising their hands.
Oh, God.
You haven't heard from that person.
I'm Joanne Deary and I'm not a large landowner, but I'm an interested person. So if you were going to have that meeting with the large landowners, would that be an open meeting? Could anyone?
They all have them. We've all had, we've had them all open. Yes?
Clint Swan from Fort Worth, daughter of a large landowner. I actually think there probably is reasonable with the unit that preserving open space is in the town's interest and there's a way to do it. But it has to be in such a way that preserves the value of the land for the person who owns it and keeps that responsibility and maybe prevents some of these cobble together things and whatnot. And I think that can still be found, but I think it's not going to be in the 70-30. So, you know, there's a way to. But it's balanced, yes, but I think it needs to be done. So I would, I am welcoming your suggestion.
Chris, there's no way we can take what we have here and try to work it by November in such that we've already put in a warrant. We have to start from scratch, I would say.
Sounds like there's a lot of changes in this time.
Yeah.
Katie Cruz, Wolf Street. In reference to the protected open space portion of this, I really don't think you should proceed without somebody with more of a conservation perspective involved directly as part of this discussion.
What was conservation?
On the board.
No, not at all.
Not people. Thank you.
Yeah, that was specifically.
Your hand still up or you?
I think you said the same thing. I was just going to say, I respectfully request that the board fill out this bylaw.
Well, I'm not sure. Which way are we going to support it?
No one is happy with it. No one, maybe the Fletchers.
The board, what do you think?
They're not happy with it either.
Do you want to, do you want to go forward?
Can we stop with the Fletcher passing, sir? We got to pause Fletchers' money before we talk about it, okay? This bylaw was meant, this bylaw was meant to provide options. Yes, the Fletchers certainly with a catalyst to it. Because the Fletchers present a picture that maybe someday you'll be in. And that is, you need to sell some of your land. You cannot farm it anymore. And the only option you're going to have is to build houses. And that's not what your neighbors and your friends and your fellow farmers are going to want to see. They're going to say, we want it preserved. And you're going to say, well, then buy it from me. You pay the taxes, you know? And that's the situation. They're not trying to hurt the town here. Yeah, they have certain motivations. But this wasn't meant to be a boondoggle for the Fletchers so much as to give an option to them.
Doug.
Listen, the house.
You've been lobbing hay grenades at this board all summer long in the newspaper and you're going to come in here and you think it's all going to be, hey, we're going to do it.
You.
Are you kidding me?
I've been watching hay grenades?
Yeah. How we've been stalling and we've been double talking. Come on.
All right. I volunteered my time. I worked on this with you guys. I didn't throw any hay grenades and you can show me where I did, okay?
It's in the paper. Anyway.
You got me in the paper? You're wrong. There's not a single quote from me in that paper.
An old quote.
And listen, the residential values in this town are skyrocketing. And that's great for all of you. Because when you find yourself in a position, when you got to sell your land, you're right, you wouldn't use this. You're going to sell it to Toll Brothers who's going to pay your top dollar and those vistas and that part of land and that area of stuff is gone. Yep. So, you know, the Fletchers aren't bad people. They're just in a position where they're trying to do something with their land. They thought that this could be an option and a benefit to everybody. If you don't want to use it, you don't like it, that's fine. You're all entitled to your opinion. Guys, and I, you know, I didn't lob any bombs, you know it. And you guys have done a lot of work. The people that work on this, great. You did a lot of work here. You tried to make it work. Obviously, it isn't good enough, it isn't right, and it needs to be fixed.
Okay.
Good luck. I mean, you know, there were no threats here, there was nothing else. It was trying to do the right thing.
I just want to call the board to see if they want to not support this article as it's, as it's written to bring to town meeting with the agreement that we're going to, as soon as we get a chance, we'll start working with the large landowners in town, pick them up with something that's equitable for everybody involved.
Hey, you also have to work with other folks, not just the.
You know what? The only problem with that is while we're in the middle of doing the, the beginning of it, I don't think, it gets too muddled if you have too many people. I think we need to talk to the people that own the land. Because they may, at, at the end of the day, it may not go anywhere. It may stay all in private ownership. So getting conservation, getting conservation trust, getting agricultural boards on that, for something until we decide which way it goes.
Yeah, this plan tries to do too much. There are several different interest groups.
I don't think you're going to make everybody out.
Right. So let's, let's work with the people that are directly involved. The selectmen in the planning board like we did before.
Conservation commission?
If you do one, you do them all and then, that's why I'd like to have a, have a, have a starting ground with that and then expand it out after that.
Okay, so open process.
Open process, yes. Peter, what do you think?
I just had a question. I'm not a large landowner, I'm just an interested citizen. If the goal of this is to make the large landowners happy and to get their top value, which should happen, but at the same time, this bylaw is using words like protected open space, I feel that it would make sense to have somebody conservation minded part of those discussions too if you're dealing with both aspects. If you're dealing with, you have the large landowners, but as a town, you want to offer something other than just houses. It does seem that you should have somebody there conservation minded as well.
I'd rather leave the landowner as the steward of what's left, to be honest with you. The other ones own it now. The other ones who kept it all the way to this portion right here.
That's where we start.
The 70-30. Now, and I, Dufresne, is that how I say your last name?
Doug Duchesne.
Duchesne, I'm sorry. And his, his, his words were passionate and they were true. And when we're done, and what he says is true too, is same thing with Danny and all you, all the farms. If you decide to build houses, that's, and, and you make a million bucks, God love you. But now the rest of, the rest of the town is going to be stuck with the burden of what those hundreds and hundreds of houses put upon the structure, you know, the infrastructure of this town. The school system and that. That's why, that's, when we say the open space, it's just, to me, it just means it's not houses. And if there's some way for you guys to get what will be fair to you, and this is, you know, I think we need to, I guess, table it. We did try as well as we could. We should have had more farmers, more landowners, large landowners at it from the get-go. And a number that was fair and equitable to them, to the farmers, to the large landowners. That's what it should be.
But so, I want to say something to that because I, I disagree with that completely.
All right.
If you come in front of us now for a large acres, 30 acres or more, it's our, no, 10 acres or more. We decide if it's an open space plan or a definitive plan. You should read that open space bylaws, see how much, how many lots you think you can get in your farms. It's going to be a lot less than you think.
Then maybe you should change it so we.
Well, it's, that's the way it's written now and the way it was passed on the floor.
The last time around.
Anyway, no, I'm outdone. I just want to, I just want to pull the board, I've had enough.
I have an alternative suggestion.
All right, go ahead.
It's, there's a lot of disagreement and there's people, there's a lot of misunderstanding and there's a lot of different viewpoints. You can really, what maybe we ought to be asking for is some funding for a professional planner that knows how to work these issues, work all sides of the issues and come up with a consensus bylaw that everybody can look.
The fall town.
We're asking a lot of you to be put in this position to, to, you know, try to balance all these things that have to be balanced. You know, maybe we ought to try to find the money to put some people in there that have expertise just in this matter. We had that, we had to come in. They chaired the first meeting. That's, that's what, this is where this all came.
But it was only one meeting.
We can continue because what we're seeing here is a lot of misunderstanding, a lot of mistrust, a lot of doubt about it. And it doesn't matter whether you're a landowner or conservation minded or fireman minded, those things exist on all sides. Just get some, let's get some.
I would, I would agree with you to the extent that we did a lousy job communicating the details of this bylaw. We didn't, we didn't sell it the right way and we didn't, we didn't communicate the salient points. Even as a board, as a board member, some of these bylaws, you don't actually know how they play out until they're tested. So it's kind of like, you know, that's why I was asking before, like, I want to know what the scenarios are, how this would work out. Is it 100%? Can I put a water park on it? Like, how is this really going to work in practice? Because, you know, we can try and tighten it down as much as we can, but somebody can walk in here with a unique viewpoint, blow the whole thing up.
That's why I was talking about experience.
But the only way this is going to work is where the people sitting right behind you and Mr. Pickard, meeting with us and telling us what they can and can't, what they do and don't need. Because they're the ones that have the land now. They're the ones that have had it.
And I agree. All I'm putting on the table is some targeted professional assistance.
That's the first step of the town.
Let's start it out with, with just like the board, the group we had before or whoever else is going to be on it and start with the large landowners and see where we get with that.
Can I make a suggestion? I mean, first of all, I want to say you've gotten beat up pretty bad here. I want to say for the record, I don't think there was any malintent by anybody sitting in front of us. So it's a very tough balancing act. Private property ownership rights versus public good and things like that with open space. We tried, it didn't work out, but I don't think there was any ill intent. So I hope people at least appreciate the effort that was put forward if not, if not the process. There is mistrust. And my suggestion would be, and I think the conservation folks and the folks with interest in conservation need to be at the table with the landowners, with the planning board, because that's the only way we're going to get past the mistrust. So my suggestion would be to have your group, the AgCon and the conservation folks a couple, try to work this together. The other point I want to make is bylaws alone. Our goal here is to preserve open space and there's agricultural land. Bylaws are one tool in doing so. There's funding in the town, there's other incentives out there. We really need to really integrate those and coordinate those in a good way. So having the planning board operate in isolation without really talking to the AgCon, without talking to the Conservation Trust, I don't think we're going to get a complete package. We're going to get a fragmented package. So I would strongly encourage you as a resident to really work with the AgCon and work with the other groups and really come up with an integrated approach that doesn't just look at zoning.
That comes in. The only problem with that is that we had all these different discussions about where the land was going. It has to start with the landowner who has it now, what they want to do with it.
I don't disagree.
Before we get everybody else worked up and involved and we need to find, sit down with them. If they want to keep it in private ownership and still do some, in some sort of ratio that makes sense, that's fine. If they want to open it up to the option of giving it to different groups, then we bring the conservation and, and. Ag, Ag is going to be there anyway because they're the large landowners.
You need different perspectives brought together. You need integrating all the stakeholders.
People like Fletchers, let them do it on the special use.
So I'm not a zoning expert. There's a reason why you couldn't just give them a zoning variance.
It's not allowed. It's not allowed.
Can't do it.
It's residential. It's residential land. You're all going to, if you're all going to, as, as Mr. Duchesne spoke, you're all going to fall into that sooner or later.
Why don't you change zoning and give it parts all the time in towns, right?
No.
Well, I, I suggest alternative approach.
Jerry, you're good. A lot of towns.
Change zoning?
Then it becomes spot zoning, then when you.
No, the only way we can change zoning is to go in the floor, to put it to a town vote, literally change.
Two thirds vote in town.
Extend them into area C, that's the only way we can do it.
What about special use? Less labor intensive.
No, there's no special use, there's no special use that covers that zone, nothing.
Well, what happens with Kimball's, when they go together, currently to do something, they go for special use.
He's in the overlay district.
It's the same issue.
No, he's in Westford, he's not in Luton.
No, he's the Luton side, he's got the.
But I mean, even if he went to the town vote, is that such a bad thing?
To, to, to rezone.
Two thirds vote in town, eight thirds rezone.
No, we would, we would have to, we would have to be on board with it, I mean, we'd have to help put that through.
But then you, then you lose all the land, then it could develop eighty percent of it.
Not necessarily, you're pinning yourself in a corner, I actually have comments about how you could do that.
Once we send it, once we make it commercial?
Read my comments.
There's no restriction.
And he could put a cardio shift there, he did nothing.
Yeah, but Jerry, my place is residential, I'm found in so much land to make a living, I could've built houses years ago, doesn't mean if it's commercial, I'm gonna.
No, 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 not at all, no, but that you said, it's your, it's your discretion though, right, right now, it's not your discretion.
Oh, it's my discretion to put up houses?
No, but now your discretion to put up commercials.
Except for I.
No, we know, I'm just saying, I'm talking about the options. It's your options.
We still have the car dealership to think, could we all agree that we're going to take a step back from the abyss that we're at now? Where we're going to work together with the large landowners.
And other stakeholders.
And other stakeholders, when it makes sense, once we.
No, it makes sense right from the beginning, cause otherwise you don't have something that works.
Well, you said to do a bunch of meetings, I didn't hear you have a listen in the beginning.
I wasn't allowed to, because it would be quorum, it was a limited group that essentially shut out people.
Did we?
Aw, come on, Don.
Yes, it was.
Why do you always have to put in things like it's a conspiracy?
Well, it was, it was Rich Crowley the vote that I would not participate and if I were there, I would make a quorum. It was not an open forum, we need to post the meetings, have them open, allow anyone to be there that can be there and speak.
They were posted, Don, they were posted. They were posting it all the way to B K to them. And you were allowed to speak at them all.
No, I wasn't, at one point Ted Dusseth said, yeah, quiet, I'm on roll, other times I would be a quorum, I was not allowed to speak. Laughed if you wanted, but I did tend there and that is an issue.
The point is that, I think we started a small group and then expanded to a larger group. Once we sit down with the landowners, they're the keys to this whole thing, they're the ones who are gonna decide.
They're, they're critical, but they're not the only ones.
They are the only ones, cause they own the land right now and they should tell us what they wanna do with the land.
Who else would you prefer to have there besides the people who own the land?
I don't know how you think you have a state.
We made the mistake once of not making sure the group was big enough.
You have a mechanism that's supposed to protect stuff that does not work.
Well, how much land do you own that you're willing to put up for this conservation thing?
It's an impermeability restriction.
Well, for example, Fifteen Great Road, there was land that no one would touch, including Mass Arbonne, anyone else goes, it was unworkable. Think about it.
The point is.
To have things work, you need all the viewpoints, you need stakeholders there.
Before we get this any further, we will, what we need to do right now is the selectmen, the planning board and the large landowners in town need to sit down and decide how we wanna go forward from now on.
Alright, well, that's the twentieth time I've heard that tonight, so can we move on?
I just wanna vote for the board that we're going to pass the selectmen not to support.
So move.
We're not gonna bring this to town meeting.
Move.
We're gonna work on it.
Second.
On the table, aye. Thank you.
Well, you're both.
No, I'm done, sorry, Don. We've decided not to, she can talk about it when we do it again, I talked.
Now we gotta do automotive.
We have to do.
Automotive, you know, the more we're touring, the more.
Should I read the.
Sorry to everybody else?
Limited volume pieces?
No idling vehicles.
I took, thanks. I'm gonna lean it on.
You took a few hits.
You know what?
A few hits.
Let's go on to the next thing, we're late, right?
It's fine, it's fine, it was joking. Yeah, but you did a good job.
Alright, we have the Rich Crowley.
It's hard, she thought it was a riot, cause it wasn't on the screen.
We have the Rich Crowley, automotive restriction, whatever. That was awesome. Hi, Peter, how are you?
Very good, very good. You have a tough night, but you're a good man, you gotta do that.
That's. One more thing.
You got another thing to work on?
It's a tough thing to deal with.
Yeah, come on, let's get it going.
Alright. Don, do, um. Chris, do you wanna weigh in on this?
Uh, yes.
Have at it.
Go ahead.
Go. Uh, well, I don't have any particular, uh.
It wasn't.
Could you guys take it outside, we're still on D N A.
Is it raining outside?
For the more. Alright, so I don't have any particular position on the proposal one or the other, but this is my, what you have in front of you is my attempt to incorporate Rich Crowley's proposal into the existing zoning law.
Yeah.
So, it's eight numbered sections, it's probably, it doesn't read.
Excuse me ma'am, could you please go outside or in the back room or something? Thank you.
Yeah, it, it doesn't read particularly well, in terms of us telling a story about what we're doing. But we had an existing use that pertained to car sales, which is motor vehicle service station. I modified that definition slightly, I added a new definition for vehicular retail sales, I made a couple changes to the use regulation schedule. But all of it was just sort of a mechanical attempt to ban car sales and anything relating to car sales. And I would say the gas stations and service stations in the B C and area B districts.
There's new, new ones. Previous ones are.
We can't do anything about the examples. Just, we can prevent them from, we can prevent new ones from coming in.
Alright.
But why gas stations, for the simple reason, we have a bylaw that, it's a special permit in the first place, there may be some places in area A and B that we might want a gas station.
I, I'll say.
Tell me, that's wrong.
And the farm bylaw actually does allow that as connected, uh, with farm ownership.
Gas station, yeah.
I don't like the fact that you're banning all automotive uses in that area.
Yeah, right, but, but the interest here that we talked about is a major threat of another car dealership.
Which you can do by, by saying, we're gonna ban, what's it, class C, what's class A for?
No, no, it's a few other things, but.
What's it, what's, 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 they're like a class A or?
Class one auto sales, but.
Why can't we just ban class one auto sales?
Well, cause I think you have to include a few other things, but I don't wanna do the full thing that Richard wants to do in his first push. The idea is the major threat that's upon us.
The class one auto sales.
Well, it, class one may not define it all.
Right, class one auto sales is new cars. I was mistaken that the class two was limited to seven used cars, that's not, that's not the case.
It's the volume you worry about, I see, cause.
Right.
No, I'm just saying, so that, it's class one and what else, cause we don't wanna use car like that, what's it, what's the?
Class two.
Class two, is used.
I'd just like to find out.
By volume though, it's by volume, isn't it?
Uh, I don't believe it's by volume.
Right.
You mean it's either in or out, sell cars or no sell cars?
When the, those permits are issued by the selectmen, the selectmen usually have a number on there if the numbers, if that's included with the application, cause otherwise, then you need the site plan, also need the site plan, you need to identify the number of vehicles on a site at a certain time.
I just think blatantly, blatantly killing all automotive uses in that area as a knee jerk reaction to having the potential for Donalds to sell is just a bad idea.
And maybe other than Donalds too, I mean, give Donalds a fair shake, I mean, who knows?
But that's what the selectmen were in your picture, that's why, I mean, that's what, that's what they were picturing.
It's, it's one scenario, the real concern is matter where, whatever, not large.
What would we be able to, how could we kind of, so that it would state a number of vehicles, you know, truthfully, I don't have a problem with a guy selling four or five stolen deals out front.
That's on top, yeah.
You know, that type of thing, the gas stations.
If it's an existing use, this bylaw won't affect, this change will not affect.
No, that's right, but anybody who buys a lot, does that, does that stay on the lot? I mean, if I, if I buy Banks Automotive, do I lose that?
As I have drafted this, you are not going to be able to establish a new car sales facility as a principal use in areas in the B C or area B districts.
Okay, not a new, a new car.
But Banks is already existing, would he as a new owner be able to do it?
You could, uh.
Continue the same.
Someone could buy the business and operate.
Keep it going.
And operate the existing business. If they wanted to expand it.
No.
Uh, they, they could come in for a special permit to expand and not conform to it. That was the act of another Z V A, it wouldn't be, you know, per se granted or denied, the standard would be, is the expansion more detrimental for the neighborhood than the existing?
Now, whatever the boss or rent man, who already has a dealership in that, that zoning area, decides he wants to buy Donalds across the way and put it in there, because he's already grandfather being in there. What we're trying to accomplish, will he still?
Special permit for expansion of the nonconformity.
So he'll still be able, so the bylaw would try to write.
Interesting wrinkle if this is trying to do it across the street, but, you know, I don't think that.
But the Z V A would have discretion to say yes or no.
They would weigh whether it was more detrimental for the neighborhood or not, and if it wasn't, if they found that it wasn't, they could.
So the one thing we're trying to accomplish, technically, that you can get around it.
Uh, the existing, there is a mechanism for the existing uses to get around the ban and it could, and it could be to expand.
What about the?
Is it temporary?
What about the strip ball that, that he has on the other side of the street with the donkey door, so if he wanted to convert that now, that would be, that would be an expansion.
Is it contiguous or is it?
It's across the street, it's not contiguous. He's already parking cars back there right now for sales.
For the temporary, we approved it for one year, right?
He's already parked cars across there right now.
It's an existing use.
But we could end that.
Technically, it's an expansion.
So technically, everything we're trying to do, you can do it.
If you wanna ban new ones from coming in, this does that.
Then let's do it.
And if you want to curtail further expansion of the existing uses, there's not much we can do in the form of a zoning bylaw change. We, that's, you make the change to fight the new ones, to stop the new ones, and then you fight the expansion to wipe out.
Well, can we take out the accessory automotive uses and just have newer used cars? Because I don't think we wanna, we all need gas for our cars, we need the gas stations, we need to make sure that they continue to operate and if somebody wants to.
The hard part right now is, is where are you gonna put a gas station down there?
Banks, you mean other than where we are now?
Banks, you come back right now and put one in, now he can't right now.
Oh, well, there's, there's lots of reasons why they, they can't, because of all the new state laws for what they have to have in the ground, what they have to dig up and what, and it's just, they can't, banks will never, can't get the tanks area in there, as far as banks are concerned, the next one down.
But the building.
Huh?
He doesn't have a roof.
No.
That would be a tank.
He's, he's lucky to have a septic system on what he has. And then you keep going down to Sheppes, Welch's place.
Yeah.
The, the back of their place is, is all septic, I mean, he's, if their tanks fail, they're, they're up the creek without a paddle.
Yeah, but he's already had to fix his tanks, he's gotta comply with.
Because he's, he's grandfather, he's just, they're not gonna, you're not gonna be able to get any, much more. The only next advantage is you go down to the, the swap place and you really think they're gonna be able to get a, a gas station onto that?
What about the couple in farms, both of these sites were changed.
Yeah, well, they actually had, that used to be a sicko.
Right.
Alright, so.
So he could put that, you may have.
Yeah, so, we don't really need anymore, we really don't, I mean, what, I mean, we got, there's already, well, three gas stations in the center of town now, right? Is that what it is, three, get, where you can get gas?
Alright, let's do it.
What's the fourth one?
Moleskine, Welch's.
Yeah, there's.
What other one? There is no other one, not to get gas, buy gas.
Moleskine, Welch's, that's it in the center of town.
So, this is, this is, and there really, there's not gonna, so this, this law will protect us against new.
If someone wants, it'll prevent someone from trying.
Easily going at it.
From trying.
Alright, let's, let's, I say we, we.
But it won't prevent Fuzzy from expanding.
Fuzzy?
Fuzzy.
Fuzzy car?
Fuzzy's on the other side, where are you talking?
Part of his land's in Westford too, I think.
It'll prevent it in a, it'll change the standard under which he could expand it. As it is now, motor vehicle service stations are a use that's, that's allowed by special permit.
Yeah.
It's on that. Special permit standard is your typical special permit.
Fuzzy.
Who's Fuzzy?
Moran.
Oh, Ezzy.
Oh, I thought you meant fuzzy car right on the, on the west. Alright, so this will go.
But if you ban it, if you ban it, rather than being a special permit criteria that you would apply, it'll be the question of whether the expansion is more detrimental to the neighborhood or not.
Then we got another leg to stand on. But it goes, goes. Can we support it the way?
The Z V A doesn't go in.
So I have no confidence in that, let's go.
So.
So we, we're gonna.
I say support it.
Okay.
And is this complete what we want, we, we talked about the temporary parking behind Donalds, is that really a loophole? Cause that was a.
Where's that?
Sounds like it.
Well, cause we only gave permission to do it in temporary fashion for a year, I mean, we could withdraw that.
This, so we're, we're adding a new use to the zoning bylaws, the vehicular, vehicular retail sales. That includes the sales of cars, but it also includes the commercial display or storage of any motor vehicles, parts or accessories, so. Commercial storage of cars for sale, even on a separate lot, would be common prohibited use in the B C and area B districts. If, uh, it'll be prohibited, if they wanna continue doing it or when the permit expires or expand the use. That sounds to me like they have to go to the Z V A, perfect for the special permit.
But we haven't given permanent permission to do.
Okay, the only question today is whether or not you want this on the fall town meeting board, we've got, we'll have a public hearing, we can do that on the October seventeenth.
I, I think we, we want this, even with my twinkle.
I make a motion that we put this on, um.
Refer to the selectmen.
Refer to the town meeting, I love, meeting on, what'd you say, October seventeenth?
Yeah.
Yeah, you want to hear it all from the public?
Are you there?
No. Okay, I mean, just, we should be.
I second the motion.
On, on favor.
Alright.
Thank you.
Good rap. Thank you.
At the meeting? Thanks. You know, you guys started a shortened county by law now.
You started it.
I hate.
Could you imagine, could you imagine?
Triple, triple.
Oh. Could you imagine?